Are we live?
Yes, we are ready, Mr. Mayor.
We are live. I know we're having issues, by the way, with the cable channel. I think as we're not digital or something like that, cities are having this problem. The meetings are not being streamed on cable.
That's correct. They're being streamed on the website. We're having trouble. Obviously, that's a very old system.
Yeah, I think a lot of cities are having that issue.
Yes.
Anyway, so let's call this meeting to order. So today is Wednesday, February 15th, 2023, 7:34 PM, and it's a regular city commission meeting of the city of West Miami. This meeting is now called to order for the invocation.
Please rise.
Dear Lord, we ask that you continue to bless us and guide us through our everyday life. We ask that you continue to guide our elected officials and city leaders so that they can continue to make the right decisions for the residents of the city. We particularly would like to have an officer from the city of Miami that passed away yesterday. So I'd like a moment of silence for that, and also a moment of silence for Myers Police Chief who passed away this morning. Amen.
Mr. Mayor, standing up for the pledge of allegiance?
Jose Smith. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes, item three, roll call. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Press it.
Commissioner Candida Blanca, Commissioner Van Chaves Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have court.
Thank you. Next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for favor refers to 2023 regular commission meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Item five, public comments.
Do you have any public comments? Please. Please state your name and address for the record.
Raquel Hernandez-Lopez, George Lopez, 6300 Southwest 16th Street. And the reason we want to speak to you guys-
Will you please put your mic down, please?
I'm so tall, I know. I have been in the property for 50 years, my husband 16, as long as we have been married. There have been horrendous accidents in there. Recently, within a couple of weeks, there were two bad accidents that people were taken away in ambulances and stuff.
I'm sure you know that the hot corner-
Yeah, it's a very hot corner. In the past, I have reached out to everyone, and I don't see that anything is being done. I understand that there's a traffic light on 62nd, and I understand also that it's, according to the city, that's a main road, so you can put a circle in there. But, I mean, we walk around there with our dogs, and we might get killed one day. There was one time that one car ended up in front of our door, of the front door. The last time, the car ended up in our circle, and the guy was badly hurt. So it's not just for us because we walk around there every day.
And one person died.
And one person died, too.
A while ago.
A while ago, yeah.
Somebody came by and said, looking at the property, and he said, "What are you doing here?" "Oh, I'm looking at the accident. My aunt died here in an accident."
This afternoon, yeah. That was that afternoon.
So, I mean, we're talking death here, not a regular accident.
Yeah.
You know?
So hopefully you guys can, I don't know.
I have a suggestion.
If you can talk into the mic, please.
Yeah.
Thank you, George.
I mean, since those things can't be done, the traffic light, the crop circle, whatever it's called, or a stop sign or anything, I've noticed, I take that road, I turn that road every day from work. I mean, I come out, I go back, and turn on 16th Street. To the left, and I think that they have, the next door neighbor has cars and trucks parked in the, what do you call the, what does it go?
The right-of-way area.
The grass right there. And it blocks the view. Definitely it blocks the view because I take it. So what I do, I start to start inching up and up, and then sometimes you gotta be looking because all of a sudden, the car is on top of you. Because the view is blocked from the trucks that park in that. Now, can we tell those owners to park somewhere else or prohibit from them parking? They have plenty of space in front of the house. They don't have a circular driveway like us, but they have grass where they can put something. Maybe we can call their attention. They can do something about it. But I'm sure that will solve a lot. And not only the accidents, we hear a lot of screeches and people breaking, oh, S.A. every day. Yeah, I mean, but it's getting dangerous, and that road is busy. Kids are going to the baseball field, soccer, and all that. They turn there, they gotta turn that way. It's a busy street, 16th, you know, so-
And I'll say during, you know, during the campaign cycle of last April, down 16th Street, it was a common complaint down the residence, even towards 67th Avenue. You know, people going over, people with lawns in order to turn. It's a very aggressive road we have there. Thank you for speaking on that. So let's, you know, I'll keep that in mind, so when you see this issue come up, we're not, you know, we don't question where it's coming from. But let's coordinate on that internally. Let's see what we got there. Let's talk to Frankie, look at the traffic study, talk to police, and see what can be done on that street. I mean, I know it's been building up, and obviously there is lives and death situations there. So I think we have to really take a big, big, quick look at it. Yep, go ahead.
Why is the reason that we cannot put a traffic circle there?
Because Southwest 16th Street is a county road. It's not ours.
So, so just west of there, on the other side of 67th Avenue on 16th Street, there's a circle.
I know. There's several of them.
Right, so, and it's on 16th Street. So why is the reason, why can't they do it and we can't?
Okay, the county conducted a limited study there a while back ago, and they did not, they didn't believe that there was any, that the situation warranted any type of traffic circle.
How long ago was that?
That was a couple of years ago. Juan, am I correct? Like three, two, three years ago, yes. Couple of years ago.
Vice Mayor, where are you saying that they have the circles?
West of 67th Avenue?
On 16th Street.
On 16th Street. It's unincorporated Miami-Dade.
Well, I think it's worth looking at, our traffic studies captured 16th Street as well, right?
Yes, yes. It's citywide, yes.
So I think it's worth looking at the traffic study and coordinating with Commissioner Cabrera's office, and seeing, you know, what we can do. You know, it might be circles, it might be some other sort of other traffic calming. I think we should also look at that issue of the visibility. I think it's, it's, look, I've dealt with, I don't deal with it on a daily basis like the residents who live on that corner, but I've dealt with that issue. We have a similar visibility issue next to, you know, the vice mayor's home with the bushes. That street isn't that active, so there's not accidents, and not, you know, life and death accidents like on 16th where there's, you know, a higher rate of speed than there, you know, probably should be on that street, and definitely more higher speed rate of speed than there are in the side streets of our city. So let's take an internal look at it. I appreciate you, you two, coming down. I know you had spoken to me or sent me a message prior, and I appreciate you speaking on the issue so that everyone can be aligned on where, you know, what's going on and hear from residents directly. So we'll coordinate on that and-
And for the immediate, and I don't want to promise something that we cannot provide, but I will speak to the chief, and he's here this evening, and the deputy, to talk about putting some enforcement into action there, at least until we have a game plan.
Right, alright.
So hopefully during peak hours that will happen.
Yep, alright.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Is anyone else for public comment? Seeing none?
None.
Next item.
Item six, report of the city manager.
Thank you. I have two items in my report, and they're verbal. The first one is that formerly Major Delgado has now been elevated to the position of Deputy Chief of Police. Pete, congratulations. He's not getting a raise, but the chief made, but, sorry, but the chief made a decision to elevate him because of, obviously, everything he does for the department. And also Pete serves as the First Vice President to the Date Chiefs Association. That board is comprised of chiefs and deputy chiefs, and so it's, it just, Pete has earned that title throughout the years for his, let's call them good deeds and great leadership skills. So he's now Deputy Chief Pete Delgado.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Congratulations, sir.
Are we gonna have a coronation?
In May. Just like the king. So the next item on my report, Mr. Mayor, is I gave the city commission a copy. I sent out an email this afternoon, and in your packet, you're going to find a rendering, if you would, of the jitney bus that was purchased with your approval for the community center. There is a rendering that looks like this on the van so that we can identify it and tie it to the community center. So we're working with a company that does the striping of our police vehicles. The cost is 600 some odd dollars, and this has been approved in concept already, so they're making the design so that you can proceed to have a nice ribbon-cutting ceremony of the bus.
Yeah, and on the quick topic of the striping, you know, I know that Commissioner Cabrera's office is donating to us a car that we're also going to assign to the community center.
Yes, sir.
And we have a code enforcement car that I believe is unmarked.
Yes, sir.
Which has created an issue in the past. We should probably look at, with the exception of unmarked police cars, our city vehicles are probably marked.
Yes.
Just to avoid any issues and, you know, I think it's worthwhile, especially code enforcement. That is not a secret, I don't, maybe I'm wrong. I don't think it's a secret agent.
Absolutely not.
You know, job. It would avoid issues, especially when he's scoping around houses. So maybe-
We will have a marking done for the vehicle.
Yeah.
With a city seal.
Alrighty.
Yes, sir. The next item is the follow-up on the Butterfly Garden with the Connect to Protect program. We met with Daniela and Jonah, Evelyn, Jonah, I'm sorry, and the budget is right around what we had talked about to bring the area of the park that was selected, where the mound is at. It's going to cost approximately $12,000 as of this afternoon. We basically plugged some of our numbers into that budget, and it's going to be a project that has a value of 12,000. We are not going to pay for the whole thing.
Right.
That's just the total budget so far.
So now that we have the, is that budget relatively complete?
We're still missing a couple of items that Daniela is pricing. I got an email from her tonight, so it should be complete hopefully by the end of the week.
Okay. Because based on that, I think, you know, we can go out and start engaging sponsors to, go ahead, Commissioner.
That was my question too, Mr. Mayor. So it's gonna be itemized? $12,000?
Yes, it's going to be, yes, it is itemized. You will find it in your email when you go home this evening or tomorrow morning, if you could look at it. There are some categories that are missing still, but we're talking, right now, we have a projected expense of about $11,900, $800, so we're very close to the 12,000.
So whoever has any connections to institutional, community, businesses, organizations that would like to have permanent sponsorship on this, on the, what is it, environmental, you know, environment, educational garden as well as an aesthetic garden, you know, we would welcome to partner with them and continue to have a, have their logo displayed in perpetuity, and also have employees come out and plant anything, the community-based, you know, so start thinking about companies and business and organizations that might want to partake. Obviously, the pricing is not that much, so sponsorships, I think, should come, you know, shouldn't that be hard of a, too hard of a sell? And I think it's really, really good for their side as well. So we're looking to get this sponsored in its entirety.
Right. Mayor, as soon as the budget is 100% complete, which I expect is going to be within the next couple of days, we will, we will talk about this, and we've already spent $1,100 to get the coconut trees relocated.
Got it.
So that's, that's part of the budget as well.
Perfect.
That completes my report.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item.
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
Good afternoon, good evening, rather. Mr. Mayor, back in, prior to January 18th of 2023, the manager interviewed the firm that she believed it was a strategy consultant, and made a recommendation because of the issues and needs of the city of West Miami to have a company, or that company, to represent the city of West Miami in Washington, DC, to secure portable water and monies and funds, et cetera. Yesterday, we received a proposed contract by that vendor, and it seems that it was, the name was not Strategy Consultant, but Continental Strategies LLC. In other words, we approve another company or another name about being the same people. So actually, we learned that yesterday.
We learned it yesterday when they actually submitted their agreement, so-
So we need to put this on the agenda for tonight to amend.
So I would respectfully recommend that you incorporate, have a motion to incorporate this proposed change in the agenda today, and then I will read the heading as it should be.
Okay. Do we have a motion to place this item on the agenda?
But what is that for a company?
No, it's the same company. They just put the wrong name on the resolution from the 18th. So on January 18th, they put the wrong name of the company. We approved the wrong name of the company. So it's the same, it's the same contract. It's just, we have to fix the heading.
So the wrong, the wrong name?
Yeah, like on our side-
We were missing the first name.
We're missing the word continental. So it's Continental Strategies, we just put strategies on the resolution.
Oh, we missed the word continental?
Yeah, so just the name.
So this is the way to open?
Yeah. Yeah. So a motion?
Second.
The second. This is to put on the agenda. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. It's incorporated onto the agenda.
Mayor, elaborate the resolution?
Please do.
The resolution, the mayor and city commissioner of the city of West Miami, waiving the procurement requirement process established by section 2-74 of the Code of Ordinance of the city as recommended by the city manager. They clear an emergency due to the constraint, time constraint, retaining Continental Strategies LLC to negotiate all the terms and conditions to lobby the United States of Congress to pursue funds for several city projects, including portable water needs, authorizing the city manager to execute appropriate documents to affect 2000 retainer, further authorizing the city manager to allocate the amount of $12,000 for this contract, providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
Motion.
A motion. You have a second? You have a second? Call the rule.
Commissioner Suarez, as you vote. Commissioner Suarez.
No.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
Yes.
For one, item passes.
Okay, next item.
Next item, then, it will be item eight, report of the city engineer. The engineer is not present this evening, Mr. Mayor. It's no report. Item nine, committee reports.
Does anybody have any committee reports?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So at 6:00 PM earlier today, we had a park and rec advisory board meeting. It was very productive. Basically, we had updates from our different department heads. Our park lights, we're gonna be sending out to bid. I'm gonna call Mr. Penno up to actually give that update as well, just so he can give the exact dates. These are for the different items that we have pending with the FERDA grant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. The two bids that are going to be open tomorrow at 2:00 will be the one for the baseball field lights. That's one of the projects that we're waiting on, and the other one would be for the redistribution of the tennis courts to include a pickleball court. That one will open Friday at 2:00 PM.
Thank you, sir. And then in addition to that, the board actually, there was discussion from Anna Roman, who's the subject matter expert that we've been bringing to the board meetings, to kind of give us information and input on potential pricings for equipment new versus used and refurbished. So based off of that information, we kind of went back and forth for the last couple of meetings, and we actually voted to bring to the commission that we want to purchase refurbished and new equipment. It's gonna be a mixture. According to her, and again, she's the subject matter expert, the refurbished equipment is basically brand new. It's gonna have a three-year warranty as well, or she'd have a three-year warranty as well, and a maintenance schedule. So, Madam Manager, you wanna elaborate more on?
Yes, and actually, the board voted on purchasing the refurbished equipment that also comes with new equipment. The new equipment basically replaces those pieces of equipment that have a lot of wear and tear, and they're not, they don't have a resale value to them. The warranty also provides for parts and labor warranty during the life of the equipment. We did respond to them, although we have a ballpark figure, we have a written estimate. We do have to do our due diligence with the procurement process, and we have to prepare specifications and bid documents to go out to bid with this. This is what the commission has the last say, and we told the board that the commission has the last say on whether they want to go with this proposal or a more aggressive proposal, which would be, which would imply a lot more money, but all new equipment as well with a warranty built into it. The warranty is the same, three years for the refurbished with the new, or the new equipment, a three-year warranty. It also includes the pricing for the rubberized matting for the floors. It takes about nine months to obtain the equipment, so I think this is something that the city should consider moving quickly on so that we can start securing the equipment, or going through the bid process and securing the equipment as soon as possible.
So again, the reason we settled on purchasing new and refurbished equipment versus completely new equipment is because she did say it's basically brand-new equipment. The new equipment, comparing it to the refurbished equipment, similarly has a three-year warranty. The idea of leasing equipment also crossed our minds. We crossed that off of one of our options fairly quickly because at the end of the day, we're still gonna be paying a pretty similar price to if we purchase new and refurbished. So the two options were between completely new equipment and new and refurbished, and the difference from her estimations were about $42,000. So it's pretty significant when our budget's $120,000. So with that, we'll still have a little bit of money to play with to put the flooring of our yoga room, and we still have other items that we have to look into. We still have to pay employees to operate the gym, and so there's still things we're playing with. So with all that being said, we decided on that option.
More conservative, yeah. I mean, we need to obviously take into account that we're building this wellness center, and we're gonna get a shell. So we have to then provide the equipment, the flooring, and all of that. So the board took a more conservative route, if you would, as their recommendation.
Put it on the agenda, we'll discuss it. When is this gonna come to the agenda?
The bid will probably be prepared within the next two weeks. We would have to send it to Mr. Villalobos for legal sufficiency approval, and then once he gives us a green light, if this commission instructs us to do so, then we will upload it into the Demand Star and have a, followed by a pre-bid conference. And so we're talking about three weeks, more or less, between the time that the bid documents are prepared, the time for review by Mr. Villalobos' office, and then the actual process to begin, two to three weeks.
So we'll discuss it then?
The last item, I don't know if it was mentioned, but the racquetball court should be getting demolished next week.
Yes.
Okay. And we're on track on getting the grants for all the stuff we're gonna do?
This is part of what, all the bid openings tomorrow will involve the FERDA grant, and hopefully we'll be meeting those deadlines. We have a playground system that was already secured. We issued purchase orders, and I believe that in the next two weeks, the equipment will be here. So we have to now assign personnel from public services to remove the equipment that's there now, secure the area. It's gone, okay? There you go. So the equipment's gone, and we're waiting for the equipment to arrive. So we're moving quickly to try to accomplish everything that's now set in that, in stone by the grant.
Perfect. Alrighty, anything else, Commissioner? Okay. Anyone else for committee reports? Seeing none, next item.
Item 10, unfinished business, none this evening. Item 11, under new business agenda items. Item 11A, request by Antonella Visconti for appeal of variance application before the planning and zoning board to build an addition of six feet, one inch from the property's line where the required setback is seven and a half feet to the property line, property address 6287 Southwest 12th Street, West Miami, Florida.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. This was held a public hearing at the zoning board on January 23rd, I believe it was, and in the application, Ms. Visconti had two requests. One was for a six-foot gate on the front of the property, and the other one was for building a bathroom addition to the side of the property at the rear, where seven and a half feet is required to allow them to go within six feet, one inch to the property line. That portion of the variance was denied. The zoning board citing that there were other places on the property that the bathroom could be built without having to go into the setback. The applicant is here tonight to request a reverse. Any questions?
Is there any recommendations from?
I have a question.
Yes.
How long is the area? They asking for the six, one, they asking for 1.5?
Foot, from the property line, correct.
How long is this area? The area they requesting for that, how long is?
The area has a setback.
The new addition, the areas, what they request, the difference?
Correct. The bathroom will be three feet? Three, seven. By? 20 feet, yeah, three feet. 3'7" by 20 feet.
I'm talking about this?
Correct.
It's 20 feet?
Yes.
So, they asking for that is just 20 feet of the property?
20 feet within the six-foot setback.
Yeah, 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 1 feet.
The recommendation from staff was to approve.
It's 1.5.
Correct. And they, they went against that. They approved the, the height of the fence, but they didn't approve the, the setback.
So, what's, what's the difference? A foot?
Foot and a half.
A foot and a half.
For 20 feet. I don't think it's a big problem, I don't think it's a big issue.
Does anyone have any questions?
To you.
How are you? Name and address the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Danilo Kakachi, my mother Antonella Visconti. Um, yeah, basically, right now, we have about 10 feet between the house and the fence. So, the setback is, is a seven and a half, and since the minimum bathroom is three and a half, you know, that's the only place where we can have, um, the bathroom outside, because, um, they were suggesting to put the bathroom on the other side of the house, but right there where the bathroom, where we wanna do the bathroom, there is the, the, the drain for the, for the toilet, the, yeah, the sewer line, right there. So, in the other ha, side of the house, there is no possible, because there is no crawl space, and there is no bathroom, and besides, there is also a setback from the other side of the house, too. It's not that they would be, you know.
That's the question I had, too. You know, it's hard to tell, 'cause this isn't drawn to scale, but they denied it, saying that he can place this somewhere else, but I don't see a 20-foot span anywhere around the house for you to place that anyways. You have your AC condensers on the other side, you have steps in the front, or in the rear setback.
But they were, they were suggested to put it in front of the gate, but it's not, it's not feasible.
In front of the gate where your carport is?
Well, they were suggested to, yeah, with the cars, or on the other side of the house, where also there is a setback, and there is no crawl space, so it's impossible.
And your AC units are there, too.
Yeah, yeah. I'm a general contractor for 20 years, you know, so that's why I, I was trying to explain to them, but it wasn't clear.
What is the, the existing structure in the backyard? I see there's a pool, what's the existing structure?
Shadehouse. Shadehouse for a pool.
That was a.
And this, this bathroom is like, what is, I mean, just, not that it matters, but it's an, it's a, it's a, so it's outdoor, outdoor access bathroom?
Yeah, we just remodel the little house, we put a pool in there, we would like to have a bathroom outside, 'cause, uh.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, by requiring them to place this elsewhere, they're being, they're be incurring, you know, a lot more of a cost, because they'd have to move plumbing, they'd have to move existing structures like a carport, or their air conditioner condensers. They have two of them there in that spot.
Yeah.
By not having a.
The area right there, there is, the, the master bathroom is right there, and the switch line is two feet from the, the wall, where the bathroom, where we would like to build the bas, so the switch line is right there, like this distance.
Yeah, most of the time, people do outdoor bathrooms, you know, butting the wall of their existing bathroom.
Yeah.
You're not gonna put it where there's no plumbing existing.
Switch line is here, going down.
The, the actual, uh, rectangle, uh, square that you see to the north of the main house, that's a master bedroom that was built three years ago?
Yeah.
Three years ago, and then east, east of the proposed addition is where his master bathroom is, inside that master bedroom.
Mr. Pan?
Yes.
Was there any opposition, any residents that were in opposition of this area?
No.
And, and this was notified, right, to, to the surrounding area?
Yes, five hundred feet.
Did you have recommendations for, so it doesn't affect the neighbor, I think I read somewhere you were saying not to have any windows on the east side there?
Correct.
So, the neighbors being, the neighbors' quality of life is being considered as well, so they won't be affected?
Is, there, there is a fence there, though, right?
Yeah, there's a six-foot fence anyway, it's not gonna be.
Right, but even then, it's above and beyond what that recommendation.
Do you actually have an eight-foot tall fence there?
No.
Okay.
I don't see any problem, man.
Okay.
I make a motion.
In the back, it's 20 feet on.
Well, I think everyone can count.
I, I make a motion to, um, to allow the, the variance.
Second. Motion and second, call the rule? Wait, uh, I'm not gonna make a mistake? No, you're not gonna catch me this time. Please read the resolution.
Yes, item 11B, a resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida, for site plan, uh, as, uh, okay, accepting the recommendation, or no, rejecting, in this case, the recommendation of the planning and zoning board of a variance requested by Antonella Visconti for a property located at 6287 Southwest 12th Street, West Miami, Florida, 3144, requesting in addition to the east side of existing property with a setback of six foot feet from the property line, instead of the required seven and a half feet setback, requiring certain improvements and other terms and conditions, providing for effective date. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Blanes, second by Commissioner Suarez. Uh, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five, uh, zero, item passes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item C, discussion in reference to commercial vehicles. This item is sponsored by Vice Mayor Blanes.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Uh, what do we got here?
Commercial vehicles, your item.
I thought.
It's a discussion.
I thought, uh, this was gonna be removed.
Oh.
Huh.
Okay.
Well, anyways, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I was under the impression that, uh, I have spoken to Mr. Pena, and Mr. Pena had told me that, uh, it was already being considered, and that it was gonna be, uh, discussed. But anyways, uh, now that we have it on the agenda, and I can discuss it, uh, yeah, I, I've noticed, you know, on the weekends, uh, and at night, weekdays, weekday nights and weekends, uh, a lot of commercial vehicles, uh, in our, in our city. Some of them, uh, in violation, um, uh, having, um, ladders and, uh, different, um, uh, articulating booms and, and different hardware on the outside of the, of the vehicle, and that's not allowed. So, so, uh, I'm seeing a lot of that, and, and I've been advised that, uh, they're under violation, and they, they, they've been, uh, cited. So, um, I was thinking that there's, there's, there's ways of, of, I mean, we, we don't want to, you know, disallow the ability of a residence to have a, a, a commercial work vehicle, uh, but, you know, I was thinking that, um, one suggestion that I made, but I don't think that it could be entertained, was that, uh, we would not allow them to park their commercial vehicle on the right-of-way, on the swale. But, uh, Chief, if you can elaborate on this, I don't think that's lawful for us to be able to, to enforce. And what I was suggesting was that they would have to park the commercial vehicle in their property, in their driveway, within their property, not on the swale. So, you know, now, the, the resident now has skin in the game. You know, he, now he needs to, to, uh, park his, his, uh, commercial vehicle, his work vehicle, within his property, not outside, you know, in front of his house, or in front of a neighbor's house. But I don't think that's, that, that we can, uh, enforce that, right?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Unfortunately, unfortunately, under the 30-dash Miami-Dade County Code, you can have up to two commercial vehicles, uh, category one, parked in front of your house, on the swale.
Okay.
Only category two, once they extend a certain, uh, size, I believe it's 20 feet. The height is eight feet, and then, so that goes into category two. But you can have up to two by county ordinance, two commercial vehicles parked in front of your house.
I, I'm under the impression that we can always tweak our ordinance and, and be not, um, not lenient, but more strict.
That would be.
You can, but it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to, to chime in.
Like, if they, if they allow eight feet, we can say, no, we want seven, as long as we don't say nine.
We can regulate our own zoning ordinance and tweak it as, as you have indicated, um, Vice Mayor Blanes, but I believe that the chief is talking for the purpose of enforcement.
And for enforcement purposes only. I can't enforce it. I, there's nothing that I can do.
So, so, so practically, Mr. Attorney?
You're saying, you're saying under, under, under our current law?
Under county code.
Under county code.
Well, but hold on, you, you, you can't go to Coral Gables and park two commercial vehicles on your right-of-way.
But it's so.
Right? So, what are they doing special that we can't do?
So, it'd be a code enforcement violation, but not something that PD can.
Oh, correct. Okay, yeah, right, correct. Not, not, not a police violation, a code enforcement violation.
The police department won't be able to enforce it.
Okay, well, that's great, that's not.
So, the, the, the other thing that I had in mind was that, uh, to, to make it, um, easier for the code enforcement officer to, to identify the vehicles that are in violation was to make the, um, the, the resident that owns the commercial work vehicle to register on a yearly basis their vehicle with us. And they will have a decal that would be placed somewhere, uh, visible, that way our code enforcement officer can drive by and say, oh, okay, he's, he's within, you know, he's, uh, you know, he, he's, his, his permit's not expired, and, you know, we'll, we'll assign him maybe a different color, something that he can look at and, and readily identify that the, uh, the permit is good. So, that would be one way, you know, to, to, uh, and, you know, they would have to pay a fee, you know, maybe a hundred dollars a year, or a hundred and fifty dollars a year. But now, you know, that, that gives some skin in the game to that resident, you know, because, uh, what happens lots of times is that, you know, you know, we, we give them an arm, you know, and then, then they take the leg, and then they take the other arm, and the other leg, you know, they, they, you know, it's, you know, they have, uh, take-home vehicles, and then they have that take-home vehicle, plus the other work vehicle, and, and, you know, we're trying to improve our, we've, we're always trying to improve the quality of life here in the city of West Miami, you know, in, in many different ways. And, you know, you have a lot of owners, you know, that are putting a lot of money into their house, we have a lot of, uh, some really expensive homes being built around the, the city. So, you know, again, you know, we're not trying to penalize, we're not trying to forbid the, 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 you know, uh, having a resident being able to park a commercial vehicle in front of their property, but, you know, it, we need to regulate it. We need, we need to find a way to, uh, and, and if it's, and if it's a possibility that we can, by code enforcement, make them park their vehicle in their driveway, not on the swale.
By ordinance.
By ordinance. It, it, it would be great, you know, because now, now they're gonna be conscious that, hey, you know what, I, I, I gotta do this, you know, it, it, because, you know, it doesn't look good driving around the city on the weekend and, and seeing a ton of commercial vehicles left and right. You know, I mean, I, I drove around the other day, it was like a third of the city, and I counted around 30 commercial vehicles. And, you know, I mean, I, I think that we need to, to have the planning and zoning look at it, these two suggestions, Mr. Pena, if you can, uh, advance this to them, you know, or maybe they can come up with a better idea.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think that's, I think you're on the right track there, that's what I, that's what I was suggesting, you just brought this item, like I read in the agenda, I was gonna suggest sending the planning and zoning board, you know, I, I think your suggestions are, are worth looking at for, for sure. I, I can't, I can't wrap my head around the pros and cons of both of them, but they both sound like something we should definitely explore, uh, you know, I mean, I, I think we should, we should flesh them out, because I think there, there's merit to them. So, you know, let's send it to the planning and zoning board, which it sounds like is already happening. Um, can, we can forward the suggestions, um, if, if we can forward the suggestions verbatim, like the Vice Mayor, uh, said, and then, uh, also see if, see what other ideas they have, uh, in their heads, and, uh, and let's bring up the discussion here. I, I have a similar concern, uh, with the commercial vehicles. Um, I think in some cases, it's a little abusive, uh, the way, how many commercial vehicles there are, and a lot, it seems like sometimes they're, they're just using their houses as, as a commercial lot in some cases. Um, and then I've heard, I've heard complaints from people that suggest that there's, they're renting spaces to, uh, to, for commerce, for parking, um, which is concerning. But, you know, there's a balance, and I think, I think you understand that balance, which is, we have these, these residents that are coming in now, um, that are, that are different than the residents we've had, economically different than the residents we've had traditionally. And we have to respect that tr- traditional resident while also stepping up the, the ladder for the ones coming in, the expectations they have in the community, and, and the look of it. So, it's, we, we have to have that balance, and we have to keep, you know, keep playing with that balance as we, as we progress, and make sure that we don't, we don't limit, uh, someone's ability to live in the city that's been living here for a long time, that makes money off a commercial vehicle, um, but also, uh, keep the expectations of, of, of many, many residents who have, um, that, you know, different living condition, and how the neighbor is supposed to look, and so, we have to, we have to keep that balance. But I think overall, all residents can appreciate the aesthetic, uh, the aesthetic improvement of, of playing how, how these commercial vehicles are, are kept, and, and where they're kept, and, and things of that nature, that will definitely improve, uh, the aesthetics of our community. So, I, I, I see the same thing, I think it's obvious, I think everyone who passes through the city sees that there is, there's a good amount, and we just have to figure out how, how to best, you know, lower the impact of that on the look of our community. So, I appreciate you bringing that up, uh, I'm glad it's going to planning and zoning already. I, I like setting these up, planning and zoning, um, they're, this board especially is very aggressive with aesthetics. As you can see, I think we've remo, we have reversed them like three times, so they should be pretty aggressive. We might have to, we might have to lower their, you know, lower their sensation.
The, the other thing that I discussed with Mr. Pena was looking at the signage. I don't know if you all recall, but we had someone in here that wanted a, a sign in front of their, uh, business, and, uh, the planning and zoning disapproved of it.
Yep.
But it, it was lawful, you know, so we, we had to go along and, and approve it. So, maybe they can, we can look at, at signage, too.
Yeah, I, I, I would like, and I, I've suggested this to members of the planning and zoning board, I would, I would like for the planning and zoning board to be more than a body that just sits and approves and disapproves applications, but it has an active role in bringing up policies that we sometimes don't have time to address on our commissions, you know, like changing of the signage that they obviously want to change, but they, they obviously don't like, sometimes we don't like them, but they're lawful, so we have to eventually reverse them. Um, so, things like that, um, you know, I, I would like for them to, if, if, if there's a problem with it, let's, let's feed off of their knowledge and expertise, and let's change it. So, I, I, so you, you've said that they're ready, you already sent that down to planning and zoning?
Yeah.
The, the.
As a matter of fact, I, I missed this.
The sign ordinance is actually, uh, myself and Mr. Villalobos are working on a new draft that the zoning board came up with.
Okay.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you, Chief.
Beautiful. All right, next item. Well, does anybody have anything else with this item? It's a discussion item, but does anyone have any comments? Any other comments on, on the, on the commercial vehicle item? It's being sent to planning and zoning? Seeing none, next item.
Item 11. Item 11, discussion in reference to possible enactment of an ordinance requiring all employees who operate a city, city vehicle to be trained with the open and, of an AED, uh, following the lead by the Miami-Dade County Public School System and Nicholas Children Hospital, and in support of House Bill 263, sponsored by State Representative, Representative Rizzo. This item is sponsored by, uh, Commissioner Chavez.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, so, yeah, February is American Heart Month, and there's a lot of initiatives that are taking place. I think that in our city, uh, you know, we were, we've been kind of at the forefront of that for a while, right? Like, we, we got all of our squad cars, our police cars, thanks to the help, help of Deputy Chief Delgado with the Firehouse Subs Grant back in what, May of last year? And, uh, now with the House Bill that's being proposed by State Representative Rizzo, it's gonna be requiring each public and private school to have an automated external defibrillator on school grounds. It's gonna require schools to have sufficient number of defibrillators by a certain date. Um, the school board for Miami-Dade County, they partnered already with Nicholas Children's, and they're gonna be trying to push forth this initiative. So, I would like to assist them as much as we can from our side of it. Um, but in addition to that, I would like to see that maybe our city pushes this, pushes this even further, and gets all of our city vehicles equipped with AEDs, and then trains all of our staff in the use of AEDs, 'cause it's one thing to have them, but you need to be trained in their use, as well as in a, you know, some sort of maintenance schedule to make sure that they're always operational. So, along with our police cars having them, I wanna see all of our vehicles, code enforcement, our garbage collection trucks, I want them all to have an AED on them, and I want all[1786.32] and I want all of our staff to be training their use, 'cause you never know when somebody can collapse. Somebody could be jogging around our city, and there's somebody picking up the garbage, and they see it, and they're ready to pounce and, and throw an AED on them, and it can save a life.
Do they have to be licensed or no?
So the AED is designed to be used by anyone, no training whatsoever. It, it's, you push a button, and there's prompts, there's, there's some that are speaking English and Spanish, and there's prompts that basically say what to do. It analyzes the heart rhythm, it says, "Defibrillate or not," and, and it's that simple. So it, it... It is that simple. So, as a firefighter, I see the importance of this on a daily basis. Whenever we show up on a call and they're being used, there's a huge difference of the survivability of that patient. So, another reason that this idea is kind of coming about is there was a, a resident, Nikki Suri, that she approached us a while back, and I believe the mayor had mentioned this a couple months back, right?
Well, we, we actually, we, we passed a resolution, it comes back, to accept, uh, an AED donation from a foundation she works with, the Brianna Bargis Foundation, uh, for the use at the, uh, rec center. The Brianna Foundation, Brianna Bargis Foundation was founded by the father of a, of a young girl that passed away, uh, and, you know, if she would've had access to an AED, uh, tragedy probably would've been averted. So he started a foundation, raises money with a five K every year to donate AEDs to, uh, places where there's kids. Um, so we, we, uh, we accepted the AED, uh, for a resolution, uh, either late last year or early this year, uh, and we're still waiting on it, but I, my understanding is that we'll have it in March.
Yeah, so on March twelfth, they're having their annual five K, and they want somebody from the city to be there to accept the AED, and I would like to be that person. So we're gonna accept it on March twelfth, and then we're gonna bring it back to our rec center and do a, a ceremony there, where it's gonna be dedicated to that foundation. And then we wanna get our staff trained in its usage. So again, does the staff need to be trained how to use it? Not necessarily, because it is, it's built to be used by someone with zero training. But you need to know that it's there, you need to know how to activate it, 'cause if you know that it's there, you need to know what kind of people you wanna grab it for. Somebody collapses and you run towards the person and no one thinks to grab it, then it's not gonna be used, and eventually fire rescue get there. But the idea is to have one readily accessible, since we're gonna have one at our rec center, I wanna take it further and have them at our seniors, at our community center, um, at our different parks, because people can collapse anywhere. And I understand that there's certain concerns, they were brought up, there were some concerns brought up at the rec meeting earlier. Um, but at the end of the day...
Wha- what were those concerns? Mr. Attorney, you wanna elaborate?
Yes, uh, the issue is that, um, we have several statutes in the state of Florida, and, uh, what I recommend simply, and I express myself, are saying, between my responsibility civilly and, uh, the life of a child, I will go with the life of a child, and I will try to, whatever consequences, okay? Uh, there's a Good Samaritan law in the state of Florida. Uh, however, we have to respond also to whatever, uh, limits our insurance covers. So what I simply suggested was that, uh, the manager check out with the insurance company and be sure that we're covered for any liability under the Good Samaritan law. That would be, uh, uh, a section two fifty-eight of Florida statute that encourages, uh, city parks to, uh, have, uh, that type of device. So I think that we will be safe, but nevertheless, I, I suggest it for the manager to, uh, to check it out with the insurance company.
Yeah, I mean, insurance company is not...
As a matter of fact, I believe that, uh, that will be an extra, uh, protection, and insurance should be less than more.
Right.
Yeah, I would imagine. I mean, the, the insurance company is not gonna have any limits on that, because it's, like you said, the Good Samaritan Act shields from liability, so the insurance, a, a, an insurance care recovery in Florida City won't even include that in the policy. But I agree with you that, uh, you know, if anything, it would be a benefit, uh, for the, for the city. If, if, if any liability would be incurred, it would be the idea that you don't have lifesaving equipment on a property where there is a large, especially somewhere like a community center, um, or, you know, where, where there's, where people gather. So I, I think on the liability front, we are, uh, more than clear, and anything that we do to further our lifesaving capabilities, uh, will be looked upon very, very favorably. Uh, aside from the fact that governments ob- obviously are shielded more so than probably any entity in the world, uh, um, the, the idea that providing, providing more lifesaving, uh, capabilities is, will only look on favorably. Uh, Commissioner, what, um, what do you think the first step is for, for, for what you're, what you're trying to do?
So the first step is that I do wanna go March twelfth and get the AED for the rec center. We're gonna set up an event there. That foundation also does free heart screenings for kids, I think it's age four to twenty. So I would like to be able to put on a town hall where I invite all of the parents from the different sports teams that we have, and any parent from around the community that wants to come. The foundation will come and will give a presentation. We're gonna explain what an AED is, how it's used, the importance of it. We're gonna explain the process of the heart screening. Nikki Zuri, the resident that was, that I mentioned earlier, she was at our rec meeting. She stated that she was changing insurance for her son, and they did a heart screening, just coincidentally. And their son had a heart condition, and it's the same heart condition that Brianna had that caused her to, to pass away unfortunately. So she actually reached out to us, she's the one that reached out, got with that foundation, and she's the one that's facilitating this. So at the very least, I wanna get that, the AED for the rec center, do the town hall, get the buy-in from all the parents. It's a free heart screening in conjunction with Nicholas Children's Hospital. And then from then, from then on, I wanna continue that forward and get AEDs for all of our city vehicles, like I said, 'cause we always talk about public safety and, you know, making our roads safer, et cetera, but there's equipment out there that's legitimately saving lives. I see it on a daily basis. Well, not a daily basis, thank God, I see it frequently. And if we can get this equipment with grant money or whatever it may be, then I don't see why we shouldn't do it.
Oh, we should, we should definitely try to. I don't know the parameters of the, the grant that Deputy Chief, has become so good at getting from the Firehouse Subs, uh, but I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know the, the scope of it. But that would, that would be an avenue, uh, depending on what, what the police department is looking to, to, to do with that. Again, I don't know what the scope entails, that, that's his expertise.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, I, I think that's, you know, that's a, that's a, that's an, I, I think definitely the training side, you know, there's two parts of being trained. There's, there's, you, you, like you said, you're not supposed, you're not supposed to have to be trained to use it, right? So you look at the, you, you can, you can sit there and look at a manual, right? And, and you can even know how to use it. But there's the, the other part, which is being comfortable on using it, right, which is hard when, when you're not a firefighter like you guys, right? Um, and I think more than anything is, I think the lack of comfort on using it is not, when, when, when you have someone and someone says, "This person's having a heart attack, put it on," but identifying that this person is having a heart attack. Um, and because after that, it becomes relatively simple. If you've, if you've seen how to u- how it's used before, you know, you know, where, where to, where to place the, the wire and, and that, everything else becomes automated. But knowing when to actually go through that process, cut the shirt and do it, um, I think that's the hardest part for civilians. Um, and, uh, I think, I think that's where the training really, uh, kicks in. So I think that's, I think that's an excellent aspirational goal. Um, I would recommend that you flesh out an ordinance, and we can talk about it.
Um, it might be a little overzealous, but, I mean, I think our commu- our city's smart enough that we could accomplish this and become kind of like a gold standard for other cities to follow. If you pay attention now that, most people don't really pay attention to AEDs, but if you now, going forward, start paying attention, you're gonna see them in, in gyms, you're gonna see them in restaurants, they're out there. And the common waiter that's waiting your food is, is gonna grab an AED if you ever go down, and he won't be able to, or he or she won't be able to do that if it's not there. So, you know, as a firefighter, we're trained to get to a scene in a certain amount of time, but we get traffic, we get, you know, bridges that are blocking us. Whatever it may be, we're not always guaranteed to be there, but that device being there is, is, if used properly, is, is gonna be guaranteed to save your life potentially, so.
Go ahead.
Uh, I wanna make a comment. Once you're taught how to use this device, it's as easy as putting on a pair of pants. You know, you put one leg, then you put the other leg, you pull the zipper up, and you button it up. It is, it's as easy as that. Uh, once you're instructed, it's, it's very easy, very, anybody can do it, anybody.
In a similar fashion of the town hall to describe that process to parents, our employees, watching a simple video, it's, you push a button, it gives you the prompts, and the pads that you put on the chest have pictures on it. One goes here, one goes here, simple as that. Nothing else goes with it. So it's, it's a simple process, but step one, to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, is to receive that AED for the rec center and get that ball rolling already, and, and do a town hall to get these kids screened for, with that free heart screening.
Okay.
Motion to send Commissioner Chavez to pick up that AED.
But you have to get a mission from the parents to do the screening.
Yes, that's the...
Well, the, the parents will be the ones bringing them.
That's the town hall to bring the parents out, and then there'd be a waiver that they would sign. That, that's why the town hall is important, to get them informed, and that way they can make the decision.
Mayor, I want to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I think it, most educated be our employees, better result would be for the city. So this is a positive thing.
Yeah.
You bring the thing, we train the people, then our people will be training, they will, they will know what to do. It will be an asset for the city.
Absolutely.
That's simple.
Absolutely.
All right?
You, you, you got, you got buy-in, keep working on this. Um, you know, you got buy-in from the commission, and, uh, I think this is really, really, really important. So, you know, go ahead. And, and whatever ordinance you need to bring, flesh them out and bring them forward, okay?
Yeah, it's a, it's a work in progress, but it's definitely important, and, right, and even if this results in saving even one life, you know, then, then it did its, it served its purpose.
Absolutely.
Well worth it.
Very good. We'll be ahead of everybody. Good.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, may I, um, ask a question to Commissioner Chavez? Do you have a date for your town hall?
Not yet. Now that we've discussed it, I'm gonna speak with the foundation and see when they're available, because the important part of that is to bring them in to discuss the free heart screenings. They need a number of parents, so they know how many nurses, et cetera, they need to bring over. So with that town hall, we'll see how many waivers we get filled out, and then we'll, that'll give us our number.
All right, so we'll work with you on developing a, a notice to the parents?
Sounds good. Can you mention, just for the record, what you stated earlier about the League of Cities, I think...
Yes, the League of Cities, uh, basically, uh, I haven't asked directly on coverage, but I did ask a general question on whether or not the, um, the, uh, program would, uh, be, if there would be any liability to the city. Of course, the first thing the league does is refer us back to our city attorney for an opinion of that, but now I'm going to be more specific and request from them via an email, I'm going to request from them a written, um, response on the issue of coverage.
But, but I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but what are we asking them for?
We're, we're asking them, uh, the commissioner wanted me to make sure that, uh, we checked with our insurance company to make sure there was, and...
It was specific, Madam Manager, to the part where you were mentioning, uh, potential cost savings?
The potential cost savings, as, in terms of...
What am I gonna say? Are we...
Yeah.
We're seriously asking him if we train a employee how to use an AED.
And a matter of fact, we also, if, if that is something that could result in a positive cost savings, net cost saving to the city, we would also look at our workers' compensation to see if there's any net possibility to save money on, on save, on...
Got it.
With savings there with the use of AEDs.
Good. Perfect.
May I, uh, Mr. Mayor?
In terms of legal opinion, they did refer me back to the city atti- our city attorney.
Go ahead, Mr. Attorney.
Let, let me ve- very, very clear again, between the life of a child and my civil liability, at least I would go with the life of a child. However, my duty is to advise you, period. I know that the League of Cities, the first thing that they would do would say, "The city attorney will give you a legal opinion," but I can give a legal opinion to the city. I cannot give a legal opinion to the insurance company. It is the insurance company's responsibility to tell the city, "Yes, I will cover you." I cannot tell the city, the, the insurance company whether or not they can or cannot, uh, cover any liability. Uh, so if they tell you, Madam Mayor, Madam Manager, that, uh, the request from the city attorney, a legal opinion, the response is, is the city attorney cannot give the insurance company a legal opinion to the insurance company. Okay?
All right, let's go to the next item.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
One more thing to add. Is there, do I have to make a motion, Madam, or Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, to direct her to work with our grant writer to look for these grants?
No.
Or...
Okay. I mean, you, no, no.
We got our marching orders. We contact our, our, also our grant consultant to see what's out there through Firehouse Subs and other programs that may be available.
Next item.
Item twelve, consent agenda items. You have one item on the consent agenda.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Item passes. Thank you. Go to the order.
I got something.
Go ahead.
Uh, to help allay the concern of our residents that came and spoke before us today, can we, uh, Chief, uh, can we direct the, uh, our trailer and put it on Sixteenth Street and Sixty-third Avenue?
Perfect.
Beautiful.
Thank you, Chief.
Maybe keep it there for a couple of weeks, three weeks, or, all right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to, to adjourn?
Motion.
Meeting adjourned.